Alderman Catalano. Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Here.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley. Alderman Woods.
Here.
Mayor please.
For next approval of the minutes from the meeting of February 30, 2020. Have a motion, we have a second, are there any questions, changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes, next. Our favorite. Report and recommendation for the fiscal 2021 budget, Mr. Wilson. If you have the floor, sir.
If you have a question, I'll let.
Well, Alderman Wesley.
No, mayor told me I can't.
We can, you can still have the questions.
And that was my answer to that question.
As we continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, so as we've done the past number of years, we have these slides to kind of frame the conversation, obviously, if there's questions on, bless you.
Follow.
Bless you. I'm allergic to the budget.
Imagine when we're reading them.
Yeah, especially if there's questions on specific line items or whatever, obviously, we can dive into those, but kind of the same framework we've had the last couple of years, and we'll get into that here in a second. So again, the budget overview, we have six fund types. These are the same six that we've had for the last five years, four or five years. We have 15 total funds, active funds. A little bit interesting this year, we did close a fund and we added a fund, so still net 15, but two of them are a little bit different. 10 have a proposed budget increase, five have a proposed budget decrease. One of those four, however, is a water and sewer fund that, from a cash flow standpoint, is positive, but once you include depreciation, it goes negative. So again, from a cash flow standpoint, the rate increases that we passed at the end of last year that actually are going to be on the people's bills that they're getting here in the next couple of days, you know, kind of proved out in the math when we're going through the budget. Capital spending, we obviously did the CIP back in January, and so again, those rolled in, and again, we try to align projects as best we can. Grant funding, alternative funding sources, MFT, other sources of that nature. So the process, again, similar to the past few years, each department or fund has its own sheet. Expanded level items were applicable, they're green, it's kind of a neon green this year, and a red, pinkish red this year. Next year, we might actually have a new color, we might have a yellow color next year, so kind of stoplight with a green, green, yellow, and a red next year, maybe, so. So, and then, and then we'll try and gain consensus on each section or each tab before we move on, that way, we're not flipping back and forth through the book as best we can. There might be some back and forth, but to the extent, greatest extent possible, we'll try to go through it tab by tab to eliminate any confusion. So we'll begin with the overview of the entire budget, then we'll start with the general fund and all of the departments, divisions within the general fund, special revenue funds, capital projects. A little bit different this year, enterprise funds than internal service funds, last year it was flipped around, but when we switched the ERP, we did the fund numbering more in line with the GASB pronouncements, so internal service funds are now after enterprise funds, then the trust and agency funds. February 27th, that's where we are tonight, which will be through the beginning as much as we can get through, and if possible, if needed, on March 12th, the remainder, so.
Hold on a second, Director. Mayor please.
Are you going to start with the general fund?
Yes.
I'll be honest, I wanted to get some clarification, anybody who goes and look at this budget on page six, I talked to you about this a little bit. Talks about general fund reserves remaining healthy, and it's just over six months, and I asked you, so now, is it because we doing that flood project and we paid over at Dalewood, we're down to six, or are we still at eight? Because I know we were at nine, we're coming down to eight. Anybody who looks at this, you know, I looked at it, I'm like, we're at six, but what did we pay?
Mr. Wilson, could you like to address that?
Sure. So, it's kind of a multi-part answer there.
I know.
I guess first, high level one is the Dalewood, or the Ward 2 and 3 Stormwater Project, that's out of the capital projects fund, so that fundamentally shouldn't have an impact on the general fund. I guess probably the biggest thing is that there's a difference between cash balance and fund balance, because there are different calculations. So the fund balance in the general fund is, you know, obviously, assets minus liabilities is the fund balance, but there's other things that are taken into account that don't, I don't want to say don't count, but are taken out of the calculation for the unassigned fund balance. So there's some prepaid items, such as inventory, some insurance items, and there's also committed or restricted items, such as, for example, some of the police department revenues, DOI technology money, the court supervision money, those monies can only be used for certain things. So all of those monies are taken out of the unassigned fund balance, which is why the unassigned fund balance is a little over six months over the cash balance. If you go through, actually, like a proper balance sheet exercises, probably closer to seven and a half to eight months. But it's just, again, it's different math.
Mayor please.
And that's why, so, we sit here and we say, you know, we had nine months, we're about eight months, but then, right here, I'm looking at it, so if I'm the average citizen, I've never done this, and I saw six months, I'm like, okay, something's not right, then, so there's some liabilities in here that are taken out of the cash, but really, the cash is actually still there. Simple, I just, so people understand what's going on.
You can continue.
Yeah, so, all funds, summary of all funds, excluding transfers, you can see for fiscal 20 what the budget was, what the projection was, so pretty close on the revenue side. Next year, the revenue's up about 14 million. Close to 10 of that is the bonds for the Stormwater Project, another two and change of that is the potential issuance of the bonds for the TIF project next door, so that accounts for 12 to 13 of that 14 million dollar increase, those bond issuances.
In, in the revenues.
Alderman Messina.
Sorry, in the revenues, right?
Correct, but it replicates itself down in the expenses, though.
Right.
Because then, the money's largely going to go back out after it comes in.
Yep.
Yeah, and then on the expense side, excluding transfers, you can see expenses are estimated come in about 1.3 million below for all funds combined, and then next year, again, you can see that the 12 million dollar increase, again, that's related to the Stormwater Project that we're going to issue the bonds for, and then the potential TIF project next door. So there are some other incremental expense increases, but the lion's share of that increase is related to those two projects.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
I just have a question on page five in our book, license and permit fees. Why is that so low with all the building plan?
Budget overview, proposed revenue.
Why is that so low? We got buildings coming in left and right, I would think that that would be higher. Unless you're coming for rent.
Yeah, that's probably three to four slides later.
Okay.
So if you wouldn't mind hanging on for a second?
I'm good.
Yeah, okay, cool, thanks. Okay, so some general housekeeping notes, as we've done the past few years, unless otherwise noted, personnel costs, increases are due to contracts. You know, the policy, FICA stayed the same again this year, IMRF actually went up 2.6% this year, you may recall, last year went down a little bit. This year was up a little bit based upon the actuarial valuation from IMRF, and then IMRF, they had to change their assumptive rate of return on their investments, because they were not going to get an actuarial sign-off on it anymore, so they're having to lower it over the course of two years, and each quarter point that they're lowering it is costing everybody about a point and a half on the rate that they have to pay. So this was the first year of that, and then next year, probably another point and a half. However, the actuarial funding's a year behind, so last year, stock market did better, so hopefully, that will help moderate that a little bit, obviously, this week notwithstanding, but that won't, that won't be in effect for another two years because it trails, so fortunately, we won't have to deal with the horror of this week and any actuary reports for a couple of years. And then on the pages, there's, you know, kind of a reason in some of them for why the numbers changed the way they did. Just a reminder, it's a non-exhaustive list, so, you know, office supplies changed by $25 on 3,000, probably not going to talk about that too much unless you guys want to, but if a number went from, say, 2,000 to 10,000, that's probably something we'll notate, so just keep in mind, again, that it's a non-exhaustive list, but we try to do the best that we can to hit the high points as we're going through. So the general fund, and then give me one more slide, Alderman Wesley, and then we'll get your question. So the general fund, this year, is projected to end with a surplus of around 466,000. A lot of that, as you can see in the table directly below that, is driven by a reduction in expenses. Expenses are coming in about 425, 426,000 better, or lower than we had expected, than we had budgeted, so that's, that's good. And then, as presented, the fiscal 21 budget is showing a surplus of just under 150,000. Part of that admittedly was by design, because we have the rent agreement with property we just purchased, but that in a year or two is going to go away, so we didn't want to build in a lot of spending based on that number, knowing that it's going to go away in a year or two, so we didn't want to start new programs or something, allowing those lines on a short term, our one-time revenue stream, that was going to go away pretty quickly, so. Okay, on to the summary of general fund revenues, kind of see where they're at here, the taxes, again, is up largely driven by sales tax, we've got a couple of new sales tax producers come on, and then the northern part of the industrial park, and then we obviously have the one coming online on Wooddale Road later this year that's going to be in for next fiscal year. Property tax increase, income tax, you know, we follow the IML guidelines for that, and they, that has gone up a little bit, as well as use tax. Telecommunication tax, still continues to be a lagging, kind of dying revenue stream. We've talked to a couple of different sources on that, and they've said that largely, that's at the federal level, and until, unless they change something, it's kind of, kind of out of our control to do anything with that. The licenses and permits, as Alderman Wesley had asked about, yeah, so it's up, yeah, about 68,000, so if you look in the budget book under general fund summary on page 36, building permits did go up 50,000. We did increase the vehicle license fees a little bit, because we are going to use the SOS data this time around. And there's some other incremental things. You know, the billing permits, I mean, we did speak with Director Cage on kind of what he thought and kind of felt comfortable with on a billing permit number, so I guess if you have more questions on that, I guess I would have to defer to him as to kind of how comfortable he is with that number and the composition.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
I'm just saying, with all the buildings there going out, we got the two by the junior high, we had the one up in, you know, there's so many permits coming, I mean, there's so many permits, I, I, I just don't think we gained all the permits fees, I just don't know about these numbers.
Mr. Murmice.
Yeah, I, I think we actually are, so the slides we show up there are for the last fiscal year, and then this fiscal year, and it's relatively the same with a small increase, but if you go back a handful of years before this big development uptick like you're talking about, the numbers would be substantially lower.
Okay. That's what I was going to say, this is probably three times above where we were four years ago, and we're sustaining that, and the other thing, when you look at these projects, is the cycle time of them, so that permit for that building was paid last year, even though the building's still under construction, so it looks like all those, but you got to take the, the cycle time, and Mayor please, you had a question?
No, that's what I was going to say, back in 2019, building permits 256,000, last year, we projected 750, come up with, we're budgeted 750, came up with 725. I'm just curious why we went all the way up to 800, why wouldn't we stay closer to 725? But you guys feel there's enough projects coming? I take it right?
Mr. Cage, you want to?
Thank you. I appreciate it. Actually, we're on, we're charting this year, certainly from 15 onwards, it's already here. This year is set to be the highest permit revenue, building permit revenue year that we've had to date since 15. I think the difference, and you highlight a good point with the 250 number, which was the prior year, it really all depends on when the actual permit comes in, so if it's April 20th, it's the prior fiscal year, I think what we had this year, we had a number of these new buildings that Alderman Wesley was mentioning, came in in May and June, and this year, we really got a head start, and it kind of kept our numbers last year lower, but really inflated our numbers this year. So this year, I think we're on chart to certainly be the best year since 15. Alderman Wesley's point is a valid one, which is, it's only charting up, we've got more projects coming in, and really, the key is when they actually pick up and pay for the permit, a month, and what fiscal year comes. Thank you.
Okay, you can continue, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, so the charges for service, again, that's the rent payment, 790, again, that's going to go away in a year or two, so we tried not to rely on that. However, we do know that it's going to be a recognized revenue stream, so we did have to present it, just to, to be transparent as to what's going on. Fines and forfeitures, fines, fees and forfeitures, it's mostly driven by a little bit of increase in the tracks guard, has, you know, kept everybody, kept everybody safe since it's come back online, which is a good thing. Interest, interest rates have obviously stagnated a little bit, however, there are better rates than in previous years in the IPBC investment portfolio, they've kind of loosened that up a little bit, so they've been returning, having better returns in previous years as well. Miscellaneous is lower because of miscellaneous revenues, part of that is just as we see trends in revenues and identify what they are, then they don't go into miscellaneous. If it's literally a one-off, then it'll go in there, but if it's something that's a little more repetitive, we'll identify it, create a new account for it or whatnot, and then plug it in. And then transfers, there was a slight increase in the interfund transfer, but that's tied to an expanded level item, and if that expanded level item does not get approved, then it would disappear, and it would go back to status quo from last year. So personnel, again, the personnel number, again, policy contracts, and there are two expanded level items related to personnel costs, so those are built in there, so if either or both of those should happen to not get approved, then that number would obviously come down. Contractual services, that's up, health insurance costs are up a little bit, we are working to moderate that. The dispatch contract went up a little bit, as did the property casualty and workers' comp costs, and there was also an increase in software licensing related to the ERP. I believe there's a...
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Well, the mayor was first.
Mayor please.
Brad, that last slide, the expenses, so for fiscal year 2021, you have 15,308, but in our books, we have 15,108, which is the correct number.
Which page are you on? Oh, sure. So the, the 5,108 at the top of the page there does not include the transfer, but that is presented on here, which is the 200,000. The transfer gets picked up a little bit lower, kind of near the, about 80% of the way down.
Oh, for the SURF.
On the page, for the SURF, correct. Yeah, so that's the, that's the difference, so.
We're not in the general fund already? That's what you're talking about, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're already here.
Yeah, so it is, it's just on 38, just the operating expenses at the top, and then the transfer at the bottom, so.
Got it. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Good catch.
So my question on the personnel, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, there's two contracts up?
One.
One, so, did you justify the money that possibly could be given in this budget, or are we going, passes what it is?
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, we, we consulted with, with the chief and came up with what we thought would be a reasonable number for the contract, and included that in here. Obviously, I'm not going to say what the number is on camera, but we did, we did build in what we thought was a reasonable assumption, so.
I just want to make sure it's built in, I don't want to come back here and tell me we have an increase in salaries, whatever. All right, thanks.
Okay, moving on, decrease in capital outlay was driven by streets and vehicle maintenance, again, just kind of the miscellaneous one-off items, there weren't as many of those this year. Decrease in interfund transfer was related to a decrease in the contribution from SURF, we kind of restructured the funding of SURF a little bit this year, and so we were able to reduce that number. And then, increase in other was due to the police pension fund contribution, and the sales tax rebate number is going to go up, you may recall that there's a sales tax rebate that's going to go into effect once our friends a little bit north of here go into operation.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
So let's go to the police pension fund. So with the new thing that, I thought he just said, police pensions.
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, the contribution, the actuarial funding request from the police pension fund went up again this year.
I always ask my question.
Yeah, I think we're getting confused, because this is an overview.
You're just doing an overview, right?
Right, and then you guys want, you want to dig in and be granular, so I think if we let him go through, because half the questions will be answered, and then we can get into the questions that everybody really has marked in their book. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
All right.
Sorry. All right, Mr. Wilson, you can continue.
Okay, sure. We kind of alluded to some of the expanded level items, in the general fund, there's two green sheets, two red sheets, the two green are the community development housing inspector, and then a facility manager, the red is the property maintenance program expansion and snow removal at bus stops, and there's one red sheet in the tourism fund, which is the clock tower holiday decorations, it perhaps, depending on which version of that you're looking at, was a more all-encompassing one, but the main thrust of it was the clock So moving on into the general fund departments, so this one, admittedly, we'll get, this, it's going to be this way, in the final one, it says administration, in the budget book it says city manager's office, that's how it's titled in the new ERP, so we're just going to resolve that going forward. So this year, there was a large increase in personnel, and then also in contractual services. A lot of that was due to the fact that going through the new ERP, span of control, things of that nature, it kind of made a lot of sense that the clerks' budget and legal were rolled into administration. Legal had, what, three to four lines in its own tab in the book, and so it kind of, at some point, just doesn't make sense to have its own department, and then the clerk's office, you know, there's the clerk, the deputy clerk, and pretty much like the line item for the codifier fees. So again, just from an efficiency standpoint, having a bunch of different departments with two or three lines, at some point, just didn't make a whole lot of sense. So that's by and large, kind of the biggest changes in the administration department budget.
You can continue, we'll go through this and then come back.
I'm actually on the administration.
Mayor please.
Brad, so under this, under this section, includes all the mayor's and managers' conference, municipal league, Springfield drive downs, I had a little discussion with the attorney on this, because he told me we can actually sanction an elected official from going, you could talk to him about the legal stuff, but if we're not attending meetings, we're not going to go to the IML.
Mr. Wilson?
Okay.
Do you leave it?
Yeah.
Got to play your tickets.
So this was the clerk's budget, as previously mentioned, it was zeroed out and rolled into administration, so not a lot to talk about on this one.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
So, we have page 41 now, the legal fees for labor, okay? So, 15,000 now, okay? I don't have the numbers, but it cost us last time for labor, so change. My opinion, I think we might be a little light there, well, such a great contract, 15 grand with a you-know-how attorney, lock it up. So, I do feel really comfortable with 15 grand for labor.
Mr. Murmice, do you want to handle that question?
Sure, yes, we feel very confident, actually, in that number, we only have one contract coming up this fiscal year, and we anticipate that that number could be pretty accurate, so we feel good about that number.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson?
Clerks, yeah, go on. Next is community development, so, yeah, in the personnel line item, there is the expanded level item that we'll get to in a moment. Absent that expanded level item, the personnel number for CD would have shown a decrease this year. The decrease in contractual services is due to a decrease in professional services. You may recall some of the different third parties that have been kind of operating down there, that's been curtailed quite a bit by the changes in staffing downstairs, so those changes have done what we had hoped and expected them to do, which is a good thing. And so, unless there's any questions, otherwise, I guess we'll move on to the expanded level item.
I have a question.
Alderman Messina.
Maybe it's not the right spot, but can you talk about that? I know, I do know there were some services that we were outsourcing, what's still left? And I had a conversation on some of them, but is, what else is still left that's being outsourced today? Like our inspection?
Mr. Murmice, do you want to take that?
Sure, yeah, to kind of a high-level summary, we went through a couple of different changes. We used to have an assistant director, we no longer have an assistant director, and instead of rehiring a new assistant director, we did a plan reviewer in-house to kind of get those permits out quickly to residents, there was a little bit of a backlog, and the thought, and the thought process was, let's, let's do this position instead, and see if that helped, it did help, permits are getting out quicker, and we were able to save some money on that as well, with a lot of the other employees in the department kind of stepping up their workload as far as the planner, community development director, building administrator, et cetera. We still do outsource a lot of our, well, not a lot of, we do outsource our inspections, some of them, with a secondary service, because we never did rehire an in-house building inspector as well. So these were some of the anticipated and planned changes to not only save dollars, but they've actually kind of increased efficiency as well, so they kind of have worked out. And we also do outsource a lot of the stormwater engineering in the building permit review process as well.
Still remains.
With a separate firm, correct.
Alderman Jacob?
Is the fire department still doing inspections for us? Do we outsource some of that to them?
We do have some work we do with the fire district, currently, yes.
We can continue.
Thank you. So this is the expanded level item, it's page 48, again, the neon green in the book. So this expanded level item would provide the funding for the housing and zoning inspector to go from part-time to full-time. I know there was a little bit of confusion relative to the salary and the hours that this person was working, so the funding request would bring their salary up to the full-time salary per the union contract. This person was working less than 20 hours a week, it actually averaged out about 15 to 16 hours a week, so the salary is not two times what they were making, you know, so inspector's not going to make 80. not going to make eighty thousand dollars a year, that'd be a little, little over the top, so. Um, but so then, this, uh, again, this forty-seven thousand, almost forty-eight thousand would be to, with FICA and IMRF, to bring them up to the full-time salary per the union contract.
Alderman Jacob?
What is that full-time salary?
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, so, per the union contract, the stuff that they would be on, it's sixty-seven thousand and change.
That's with the FICA number?
That's just the base salary.
It's about seventy-five. We can continue.
Sure, thank you. Uh, and so, um, as you can see, uh, on the slide here, and then also in the narrative in the book, uh, would allow for additional time to be devoted to the rental housing inspections, commercial occupancy inspection, subsequent follow-up compliance. Uh, it also would alleviate, uh, or add greater flexibility to scheduling of those appointments as well. Right now, being part-time, uh, the scheduling's a little, little rigid, um, with the employee just based on their schedule. Uh, and with some, uh, proactive outreach, uh, again, just the general efficiency with the outreach, the follow-up and the scheduling. Uh, and then, if, uh, this item is not approved, uh, then they would just remain part-time as they currently are. And any, uh, more finite questions, then I would probably have to defer to, uh, Mr. Cage.
Okay. Alderman Messina?
I'm not going to vote on it today anyhow, but just talking through this with Ed a little bit too, um, he's a fireman, part-time fireman, I think he's leaving those duties, so sometimes he's able to piggyback and work with the fire department, to Alderman Jacob's question. So sometimes they work off each other, so he's really taking some load off of them, and they kind of work very well together. But more than anything is, if he has a change in job status, um, that also puts us at risk that if we don't make him full-time, he may look for employment full-time somewhere else. And I think he's been with us over five years.
Oh, seven, seven to eight, yeah.
Seven years, okay, okay. Great, so I, I think this is a great idea. Makes sense with the volume.
Well, Mayor, please, Alderman Jacob.
Technically, if we're going to move forward, we need a motion here to approve this, not, not at a later date, so.
Okay, second?
Good question. So what, what work are we not getting done presently with him as a part-time employee?
Got, have to defer to Mr. Cage, uh, for that one.
Uh, yes, thank you. So, this, uh, individual right now does, um, rental housing inspections, and he does, uh, commercial occupancy inspections, so we are managing both programs. The commercial occupancy program, as you, um, as the council's aware, has been up and running, replaced the business licenses in two thousand and seventeen. The desire from the council, um, is for the city and the fire district to go through every business, and that's exactly what we're doing. Um, the, I, I think the commercial occupancy, obviously, we had some teething pains at the beginning, um, obviously, we've, some people have gone through the adjudication process, um, we just had that the other day, and it was the lowest number of cases we've had in quite some time, which tells me that people are coming into compliance, so. I would say the commercial occupancy program, uh, which this individual would inspect with the fire district, is working well, um, and I know that they're splitting up some inspections because it's, it's a numbers game, even though we've kind of split it up into, um, different zones. But really, the, the, the main issue that I'm seeing is that we spent a lot of time and effort working on the commercial occupancy program. I know you guys have heard me talk about it, and, uh, Ms. Chrissy, a number of times. Um, the rental housing program is, has been somewhat left behind. I don't mean that in a bad way, we've been more reactive, uh, simply because this individual works, and I think Mr. Wilson mentioned it, averages about fifteen hours a week. Um, so, two days a week, kind of full days, um, one day is on rental housing, one day's on, um, commercial occupancy. We have quite a considerable number of rental properties in the community. This individual comes in, has a day, they do inspections. If someone wants an inspection on another day, sometimes we can accommodate it, often we cannot, so we have to work around the individual's schedule. So we're being very reactive to the rental housing program, um, which, with some of the things that have come up recently, some of the changes in code, I'd rather be proactive. We want to be more flexible on when we can do the inspections with the individual being here, because that's more, you know, customer service orientated. And I know, um, some of these cases have come to light recently, quite frankly, they're life safety issues. This individual knows the life safety codes, uh, he's a fireman existing right now, he knows what the issues are because he sees them on a daily basis. Um, life safety is key above everything. Uh, the individual, in my opinion, um, went back, in, in the good old days when I was an inspector, we have a very similar outlook, which is, life safety, you can't waive them, they have to be brought into compliance immediately. Other issues that are code issues that aren't life safety, you know, you give someone a reasonable period of time to come into compliance. When I say reasonable, a week. Um, and if the individual's working with you, you work with them. But life safety, across the board, kind of cannot be waived, and they have to be fixed immediately. Um, so, what I'm seeing with the rental housing program, and I'll just wrap this up very quickly, is that, um, I'd rather be, uh, proactive about it, because some of the issues that we're seeing, quite frankly, concern me because they're life safety issues. If we're having a problem scheduling inspection because we have to wait for a certain day, uh, then what happens is the, uh, property owner is not available that day, and then it gets pushed off another week. Um, so, it's trying to be proactive, trying to get things done. Uh, I know the individual's been here longer than me, which is a good thing, he has some consistency. I know he works well with, um, certainly with the businesses, uh, and certainly with the property owners, and we've had some, quite frankly, some awkward cases recently, um, that have been resolved in a productive manner in terms of not in compliance, brought into compliance through permits, um, through life safety codes being addressed, and issues that have even gone as far as, um, contacting the city attorney, uh, that have been resolved. So that's kind of my, um, the background on it. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I'm going to go back kind of to the original question. So right now, we, we are doing all the inspections, so I guess that's the underlying question. Yes, no?
We, uh, we're accommodating the inspections, um, but bear in mind, we do inspections for rental properties every two years. If they pass, they don't get an inspection the next year, they get it every two years. Because it's, it's, again, it's a numbers game, the individual doesn't have the time to go through every property every year. That's a concern to me, uh, just on...
Alright, so what you're saying is, we're supposed to check it, inspect it every year, but we're only doing it every two years?
Well, um...
Go ahead.
An excellent point. The code allows us to do it every two years. Some of the things that I'm seeing, which requires permitting, obviously, the other arm within our department, um, I would prefer to do it every year, and I know that's what we're doing with commercial occupancies. I think that's a, it achieves a better result. The city council rightly, um, brought this program into effect to raise the standards on rental properties. Uh, life safety, living conditions, those things are important, and quite frankly, some of the situations we see, um, that involve families are, can be disturbing. Um, we want them brought into compliance, so are we doing what we need to do? Yes. Do I see us doing the best job that we can? Probably not. Is that anyone's fault? No, it's simply because the individual is here two days a week rather than five.
Right, and, and, well, let me just follow up, and I'll get to you. And I'm not looking to place blame, I'm just looking at, at, at numbers, and I go at fifteen hours, that guy's doing pretty much the job. What do I get for the other sixty-five percent that I'm adding? I guess is, is where I'm, where I'm going. And so I, I, I get the proactive, or, I don't understand how we, the, the code says every two years, but then we're gonna, we want to do it every year, maybe, in some cases, so maybe you can expand on that a little bit and...
Sure, absolutely. The code allows us to do it every two years. It's my personal opinion that we should do it every year and be consistent with the commercial program. That's just my opinion, it's not written in the code. Uh, I think from a life safety standard, if you go into a rental house January of one year, and then you go in January two years later, a lot can happen. Tenant can move out, property could change hands, sometimes it can be for the better, sometimes it can be for the worse, property remains vacant for a period of time, a two-year period of time, I know, a two-year period of time in my life, a lot changes. Sometimes it doesn't, which is good news, and sometimes for the, the, the properties that are struggling, um, not so good news. The individual, um, the, um, we're discussing this position, um, if those inspections are done, they will be doing other things as well. I know there are many other things that we want to do as a city. I know I've got a list of other jobs that need to be done. The individual will be busy doing other things if all the rental inspections are done and all the commercial occupancies are done. But I think it, it's not a question of what's not being done, um, I think it's what could be done. I think that's kind of my perspective. And then, just last point, one of the other concerns that I have is that Alderman Messina brought up, uh, which is very accurate, uh, the individual's, um, going to be moving on from their full-time job, transitioning into something else, hopefully with us, if not, it could be somewhere else. So that's, that's another thing on my mind. We've had a lot of transition in my department, um, sometimes good, sometimes not so good. Right now, I'm fairly confident with the staff that we have, that we do an excellent job. I see it in adjudication with the numbers dropping, I see it with the rental housing, um, properties coming into compliance, and the revenue going up. Just to give you, uh, a couple of statistics, the average rental property income, uh, throughout the city is above eighty thousand a year, just in revenue from, um, inspections and applications. Commercial occupancy typically averages about a hundred and twenty thousand a year. So those two programs bring in approximately two hundred thousand average, you know, sometimes those numbers drop, sometimes they go up. Uh, these are programs that are put into effect. If people don't come into compliance, we work with them. If it's a life safety issue, um, they have to come into compliance immediately, or they come to adjudication. And, very briefly, and lastly, the adjudication list from, uh, two thousand and eighteen, uh, when we, um, reestablished the, uh, adjudication process, the, it was three pages long, in terms of people who weren't in compliance, and that's commercial occupancy, rental housing, code enforcement, and the like. Um, we just had an adjudication the other day, and we had six cases. So that tells me that people are coming into compliance, and it's coming into compliance because of the people who do the paperwork, the registration, um, the clerks, and the inspections, and then, if you're not in compliance and there's a problem, then you come to adjudication. Thank you.
Okay. Alderman Messina?
Yeah, just a couple points, I guess. Addison is, is every year for rental inspections. I think Alderman Jacob, your dad is a rental property there, isn't it every year or two years?
No, it's not every year.
What is Addison's?
You have to pay every year, but they don't come out and inspect every year.
I'll look at my own situation with rentals. I know there's a backlog of four months to get an inspector out to that house. Now, I'm a good owner, I believe, so, but I know that if there's that big of a gap, uh, to your point, something we didn't catch, he was a fireman for the township, and he flat-out said, "You need carbon monoxide detectors here and here." I mean, you couldn't find a safer house than our rental home, but these are things that having the right person in place is great, but at the same time, when he dinged us and said, "You need one more between the bedrooms," it, it took a month for him to come back. So God forbid, something would have happened in that period that we had a rental, something would have happened. Well, I don't know about you, but I'd rather not be in the news. So, to me, this makes all the sense. I think we're, maybe I'm not, maybe this is what you're saying, it's a scalability thing, we're checking the box, we're not doing a great job, and we're reactive. I know some of my residents have brought stuff to you guys, and that's probably one of the main reasons it got caught, otherwise it just would have, we maybe would have stumbled on it. So to me, just talking through it with you that day, it started making sense, and then talking through it with some of the issues we've had in our ward, um, this, to me, seemed a no-brainer with the individual that we have currently on staff. I'm done.
Mr. Cage?
Uh, just very briefly to echo that point, uh, in terms of the reactive and proactive, uh, we do get a lot of assistance in terms of, um, potential rental housing properties from, from residents, elected officials, other departments such as the, uh, the finance department, um, specifically with water billing. These are items that people bring to us, we investigate them, but that, that's the difference between, exactly the difference between, you know, reactionary versus proactive.
But it's also, sorry, just one last point.
Alderman Messina?
It's also reducing the amount of property maintenance issues we're getting, because it's on your radar. I think we brought one, there was a complaint that you, they didn't even know they had to register, and I think that's common, right? And so, um, I think that will also help that issue, and hopefully, we'll see it downstream with the amount of cases we get for property maintenance, because they know they're, I hate to say they're on watch, but they know that they're registered and we're on watch.
Correct.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
So let's go back to this commercial occupancy. So you're going to stay right here and tell me that we inspected every building for last year? Because I'm telling you, you did. I, I guarantee you, we split it with the fire district, fire district takes half the town, and we take half the town. So what I'm hearing today is that we did hit every commercial occupancy?
Mr. Cage?
So, to answer your question, last year, we did not. Um, we were splitting it between the two simply because it was, uh, man-hours, we just simply didn't have enough, um, inspection hours to do the job. The plan is, um, with this position, if expanded and approved, there won't be any issues with commercial occupancy in terms of inspection numbers. The, the, the challenging part with that is the follow-up of bringing people into compliance, and really, adjudication has been very helpful with that.
I, I just, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I just, if we approve this position, and, and I, I'm saying we do need it, no doubt about it, but don't come back here next week or, or next year and say, "Oh, by the way, we didn't get through all those commercial occupancies," because there won't be an excuse, because you've got a full-timer now to do it, and a rental property. And if we do that, they should be able to handle it, between the fire district and that. I mean, it's, it's a no-brainer.
Mayor, Mr. Cage?
I was just going to say, trust me, I don't plan on coming back, uh, if I come back...
Taking enough heat now?
If, if, if I come back, it's, it's to say that we've done all the inspections, because that's exactly what this position is about. I know the city council put this into effect a number of years ago, we need to be in those businesses, we find life safety issues, there's a reason for it, uh, and it's an important project, uh, it's an important program, and you're exactly right. Shame on me if I do come back, and I don't intend to.
Mayor, please?
So Ed, if this gentleman is going to be doing all this commercial occupancy, does that mean then the fire department's going to do less because he's going to take over some of that work?
Mr. Cage?
So, um, the way that it works, eh, one of the true advantages of having a fireman in this position is that they obviously talk the same language as the fire district. Really, what we did when the program started off, we had, um, two people on our staff doing inspections in addition to the fire district. I think we've become more efficient as, as the fire district. There's a lot of trust, obviously, between the individuals because they both do, um, essentially the same job, um, in different fire departments or different fire districts, so they do split up the inspections. The key is, uh, Alderman Wesley made an excellent point, the key is that a trained individual, city or fire district, has to go into business every year and do an inspection.
Mayor, please?
No, but, so if, if our, our person is going to go into every business, is he going to walk in with the fire department at the same time, or are they going to, separate? Because, you know, if I'm a business owner, oh, now I got to walk this guy around, I got to walk that guy around, so I'm just curious.
Mr. Cage?
Right, uh, excellent point. In the past, they have doubled up because there's different skill sets. That will not be the case. Uh, the plan, certainly, my plan is, um, and obviously, we're going to have to talk to the fire district, uh, but the plan is that our inspector would kind of ramp up the number of inspections that he does. Therefore, we, you know, we value the fire district, they do an excellent job, they're an excellent partner, um, they've helped us out when we've been short on our personnel, they've stepped up their game. If this individual, you know, was made full-time, I would expect that individual to do a lot more inspections, and then we would up our game.
Okay. Any other questions? We have, uh, motion and a second, uh, roll call?
Alderman Collano. Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski. Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley. And Alderman Woods. And Alderman Woods.
No. That passes. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Moving on to the finance department. Not a whole lot going on here. Just one note in the contractual services, it was a reduction in printing. We are finding that we're able to print a little bit more in-house versus sending it out, which is good. And then the increase in commodities, they're having a new version of the Blue Book, which is also officially known as the Gatsby Bible, that we're going to need to buy this year. And so one copy is more than our normal budget, so we had to up the budget to get two copies of that. But other than that, nothing really exciting.
Can I borrow that on the weekends when I'm bored?
Sure. It's like, what, thirteen hundred pages? It's a quick read, too.
I was kidding.
Legal, as we previously mentioned, was rolled into administration, so we've already kind of gone through that. Police department, high level, there's a not recommended expanded level item in the police department. Again, contractual services, a couple of nominal changes, and the dispatch contract going up, decrease in other was due to a reduction in court mileage reimbursement for the officers. Unless there's any other questions, we'll move on to the expanded level.
Do we want to take a vote on this thing while it's here?
Going on to the...
Expanded level?
Expanded level, yeah.
Right.
Yep. So real quick, I don't, Jeff, do you want to talk on this one, or?
Yeah, sure. So basically, this was put in the budget, not as expecting to really discuss this and get this approved. This was put in the budget as foresight for down the future, down the road in the future, if we wanted to expand the program, what it could potentially look like, just showing the council that the police department and admin staff have thought out different scenarios. If the CSO allotments that we have now are not working, this is what we could transition into. I would say, however, that right now, it currently is working from a property maintenance perspective. And if you have any questions on property maintenance, just let me or the chief know. But we do have the data sheets, and the cases are being closed out in an efficient manner, more so than they have been before, and we're pleased with how the program is progressing. Right now, currently, we do only have two CSOs, but we budget for four. When we made the switch over to have the police department handle the property maintenance, we only had three CSOs. So we did expand to four when we transitioned over to that program. So we are about to, we're interviewing right now for those vacant CSO spots. So we will, we should be fully staffed by the spring.
Thank you. Alderman Messina?
So I, I know you guys were expecting a phone call from me, but I wasn't quite there. But I do think, and I know we're looking ahead, and I get that, but I do think that a supervisor probably is something we should look at sooner than later for the property maintenance piece of it. I've always talked to you about succession planning. I also think, I mean, I hope we understand, we're having a hard time. So we budgeted for four. We have two. We had one that was here a couple weeks. Maybe it's out of line. I just, I don't, I'm just not understanding. I mean, are people understanding this is a pathway into the department, or that you get extra stars, like if you're a veteran? I mean, I just, I don't know why we're having such a hard time keeping these guys or gals, as this, from what I understand, as a CSO typically is your pathway to become an officer, and kind of just, kind of like an internship. I might be completely wrong. Maybe the chief can elaborate, but I guess my point is, could we, could you elaborate a little bit about the four we have budgeted? Could we at least fill those, or could we at least do three and have a supervisor? Because I feel like even the supervisory piece of it is, I'm sure your watch commander or your sergeants don't want to hear us calling about these smaller things, and at least this gives them an opportunity to hone their skill set.
Chief?
So you're right. It can be a pathway into the department. We had two of our last three CSOs that have been hired as sworn officers, one with our department, one with a neighboring department. You know, the one per, so we were at three a decent part of last year when we took on these additional two hundred complaints. We did have one last a very short time this fall. Sometimes that happens. We have a very good batch of candidates right now that we just did interviews and hope to make offers in the next week or so, once we do second rounds. You know, on the supervisory portion, you know, I guess backing up to the, we used to have four CSOs several years ago. They handle, you know, all the non-criminal stuff. So they're busy as it is before we did take on PMI. We moved down to three when we had one leave about six or seven years ago. And then when we took PMI back on again, we decided to go back up to four to handle some of that additional caseload. Each of those two hundred complaints that, like I said, we closed out almost all of them with compliance. Our goal was not revenue from that. It was to get compliance. Each of those takes many of the, I won't say a hundred percent of them, but many of them take several follow-up visits and hours of documentation and making sure we're writing good reports for it to make it to adjudication and have the enforcement. As far as the supervision, we do have a day shift watch commander. He does an excellent job with managing the program, and our CSOs, they take pride in how they handle the program. But it does take them away from some of their other duties, which even before this program, they were busy, just as busy as the patrol officers are, handling different types of calls, but handling non-criminal complaints. So, you know, the supervision of it is important. We're handling it now, but that's where, kind of as we had talked, leading into the fall, and, you know, really busy with cases, is looking at, at some point, are we going to want to do some more proactive measures, because it can be reactionary? And then just the supervision, as we have the adjudication hearings and stuff, we hire back a sergeant to run the adjudication hearings, because we have to have court security for part of that. So all that kind of plays into it, as that's where we were kind of looking at. We may want to go down this road at some point to raise the level of service with this property maintenance division.
Alderman Jacob?
I guess when I was reading this, one of my concerns was it says, "Two personnel permanently assigned to those types of duties," so that means they wouldn't be doing any police duties. So I really don't see why somebody would want to take a position in the city of Wooddale, being a CSO, and they're going to be basically a code enforcement officer. So I don't understand why it says they would permanently be assigned to that.
Chief?
Yeah, that's something we talked about, is just trying to divide duties that, you know, if someone's tied up on a property maintenance issue, you know, that might take two, three, four hours for that day, which means they're unavailable to respond to an ambulance call, to handle city deliveries, to assist with traffic control at an accident, whatever it might be that they might be used for. But actually, our candidates that are coming in, some of the ones that we interviewed today, very interested in getting into law enforcement. And I think if you lay out the job expectation from the beginning, we'll have people that are interested in the property maintenance enforcement and learning to do interviews, do investigations, do proper follow-up, making themselves attractive to police agencies. Same thing on the CSO side. They handle plenty of things that, if you do a good job as a CSO for a year, or two, or three years, and an agency contacts us, and they were a go-getter for those years, they're very attractive to go on to a police agency. So you can get, we have a, we have one that's been a longtime career employee. She does an excellent job. But you don't have to be a longtime career employee to do well at this, if we did expand at some point.
Follow-up, Mr. Jacob?
Yeah, this one is just kind of a question here, and I know one of the deputy chiefs, Mike Kullik, because he's sitting here, but I see the...
Not on camera.
He's unarmed.
I see the, the, there's two deputy chiefs. I mean, one has thirty-three people underneath him, and the other has fourteen people underneath him. So we, so I'm not quite sure, why wouldn't we move some of the supervision from a sergeant or watch commander to maybe a detective who does do follow-ups and does do interviews and that type of stuff?
Chief, you want to?
So one is a separation of duties versus union-type issues and supervision. But second, it's kind of span of control. So one of our deputy chiefs that's in charge of operations, he has five sergeants. That's his main span of control. And then each of those sergeants have five to seven officers that are their span of control. On the investigations deputy chief side, he's got an emergency management and several detectives that are under his span of control. But your span of control of your immediate reports, five to seven is about the limit of what you can actually effectively manage, especially on a twenty-four-hour operation. But that's why you might see thirty under one and fifteen under another. It's because there's five sergeants that are reporting directly to the one deputy chief, and they're responsible for each of their shifts. So that's really the reason it's structured that way.
Mayor, please.
Yeah, I'm going to agree with the manager's recommendation of no on this, because I already know we have an awesome supervisor standing right there at the podium, and he's, and he's got two deputy chiefs that are very competent, and not to mention, they were one of the safest cities in Illinois. So I think, and they were short-staffed, because they've been retiring officers. So I think the supervisor's position is filled.
Thank you. I'll just throw in my comment. I'd like to see the program work at full speed. Before I add it to that program, I think you touched on that to begin with. I went along with the program. I'm still not a hundred percent sold on it working. Not that it can't work, but the same issues are applicable, that whether they move on to be a police officer here, which is a plus for us, or move on to another community. It seems at some point, at least the recent history shows, that we're like the training grounds for you. Not anybody's fault, just one of the things that happened. And getting the right candidate, I think you touched on that, too, and specifically honing in that they're going to be an inspector, a property maintenance inspector, creating the right expectation. I'd like to see how the program then plays out with the new people coming in. That's my opinion. And I would agree with the mayor that at this point, I think we're in control. Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Well, I'm not going to ask anything about that, but the part-time employees and the seasonal employees, do we get reimbursed for that? Because one's for pool crossing, right?
Chief?
Yeah, we do a cost share with the park district for the pool crossing guards that are out front during the summer.
Right.
The school crossings, which is the part-time employment, we pay a hundred percent of that. And that's, some towns with their school districts do have some revenue, or some cost-sharing agreements on that, but the majority of them are paid for by the municipalities. The last time we did the study.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, chief.
Mr. Wilson?
We need to make a motion to deny this?
No.
We don't. It wasn't recommended, so we, I think we...
Okay, which, I was just going to say, we just want to make sure that the final disposition is concurrence with the...
No?
No.
Yeah, it's a, it's a no.
It's a, please look, consider it for down the road, but no.
Right.
Okay. All right. We just want to make sure it was properly dispensed, that's all. Fire and police commission, again, nothing exciting. Patrol test was, what, 2019, so there's no patrol test this year. So that's really the reduction in cost this year, is that there's no patrol testing. Other than that, nothing much with that one. Public Works Administration, high level, there is an expanded level item in Public Works Administration. And as it was with CD, absent that expanded level item, the salary line item would have shown a decrease year over year. And then again, in the contractual services and others, there's nothing really significant. I think the other was just in some capital stuff, again miscellaneous-type items. So unless there's any questions, we'll go to the expanded level item. So this is a facility manager. This has been an item that's kind of been talked about for a number of years amongst staff, trying to divvy up the duties of who does this between community development and public works. I know earlier I said there might be a yellow sheet next year. Kind of been speaking with the manager. Had we rolled the dice with it, this probably would have been a yellow sheet this year, because we recognize the need. However, the work has been getting done. You know, Mr. Cage's department and Mr. Lang's department work well together. However, you know, staff feels that there could be a more efficient way or a different way to get it done. But the work has been getting done. The work will continue to get done regardless of this sheet. However, like I said, this has been out there for a number of years. It originally started with probably about a two-and-a-half-page memo of all the things that could be done. It was distilled down to the sheet that's on page sixty-five in the book. So again, like I said, it's been out there for quite a while, but the work has gotten done. And depending on the decision, the work will continue to get done. But this is kind of, kind of where this is distilled down to over the past number of years, between Mr. Cage, Mr. York, now Mr. Cage and Mr. Lang.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Okay. I have a couple of questions. I did call Alan on this one. And Alan, explain to me, because the way I'm reading this thing, is this guy's going to walk the buildings and say, "If that's a burnt-out light, we got to call, do the paperwork to have someone come over and replace it." Could you explain? Well, that's the way I'm reading to this. Could you explain?
Mr. Lang, you want to answer?
What we talked about.
Sure. Thank you, Chairman. Yes, the individual we'd be looking for for this position would have a building maintenance background. They would not only be responsible for handling those day-to-day items that arise, like you alluded to, but also some higher-level administrative tasks, such as contract management, assistance with budget preparation and capital improvement planning as it relates to facilities. So they would be handling those day-to-day tasks, but also some higher-level items as well.
Alderman Messina?
Isn't that what your assistant director does?
Mr. Lang?
Well, the assistant director does many things, actually. He's responsible for streets as well as water utilities, assists with vehicle maintenance and fleet management. He's responsible for, you know, special events and budget preparation and all that other administrative fun that we get to have. So we think we could be much more efficient and much more proactive with our facility management as it is, and we think it could benefit to go through one centralized person, such as this.
Alderman Messina, follow-up?
I'm going to assume Alderman Jacob's going to allude to this, but, so when I think about the tactical things this individual is going to do, my guess is the infamous train station, you get multiple complaints about the heat is not working, the lock is broke, garbage is, you know, whatever that might be typically. Are you talking about those kind of tactical tasks, where that individual is going to do some of that, where we, right now, have public works kind of doing it?
Mr. Lang?
Yeah, absolutely. Those types of issues arise all day, every day. You can imagine with the amount of facilities that we have, that those types of issues will arise and continue to arise. So this individual would handle a majority of those tasks, and if it's something that's more intricate than just switching out, you know, an electrical socket or something like that, then he would be responsible for contractor procurement and management while that goes on.
Okay, that's one last question.
Sure. Follow-up?
Is there any possibility of this being, starting off as a part-time role?
Mr. Lang?
We think that there's enough of a workload here, especially with the assistance at the administrative level, that it would keep a full-time employee busy. I can certainly tell you that with the amount of facilities issues that run across my desk, and, you know, we obviously have some new facilities that are going to be added to our list here shortly, and some of our other facilities are aging, and there's an increased desire for a level of service at the RTA station that you mentioned. We think that we could be much more proactive at the administrative level that would require a full-time employee.
Alderman Jacob?
I have a few questions. First of all, would this person, and they're, when they're doing this full-time, are they, you kind of mentioned, he was talking about the train station, so, you know, sometimes there might be a landscaping issue. Is it going to cause any friction between, you already have an assistant public works supervisor, so, you know, if this person calls up one of the guys to come over there and take care of something, that they would have to come up, and is this going to cause any friction between two super, you know, management positions?
Mr. Lang?
Yeah, I don't foresee that happening. We share resources constantly within the Public Works Department. I mean, there's times where a street department will help out with water or wastewater utilities. We work pretty well together, and everyone has a significant enough workload that I'm sure nobody would mind an extra set of hands in there to help out every now and then.
Mr. Jacob?
And is this person going to be, I mean, he's going to be full-time. Is he also, is he's, this is a salaried position? Is that correct?
Mr. Lang?
Correct. It would be a salaried position.
Could this person assist with snow plowing, or no?
Mr. Lang?
Yeah, absolutely. Snow removal at either City Hall or the RTA station, if we were overwhelmed. Not necessarily plowing parking lots or streets, but maybe, you know, throwing some salt on if we needed here and there. It's not going to be taking away... It's not going to be taking away overtime from any of the contracted employees, though.
Okay. And?
Follow-up, Mr. Jacob?
I'll hold off for right now.
Okay, I'll call on myself.
Go ahead.
Mr. Woods?
Thank you. I get what you guys are saying, and this is almost the same thing, whether it's the public works, the building department, or the police department. We've all been understaffed, and we're all in a transition period. We've all gotten the job done across all those departments somehow, some way. Kudos to everybody that works here. So I'm not saying that we don't need anybody, but it's like we can't get a foothold on a stable staff. So to me, sometimes just throwing other bodies in there. When we've been back and forth with director, assistant director, we have one, we don't have one, one leaves, one comes. Again, nobody's fault. It's just hard to think of throwing another person in there and then going, they're going to do these other things. And in my head, I always ask the same question. So what weren't we doing that we now need another guy? And I think Mr. Cage addressed it pretty, pretty well, is that he's going to add stuff to it. That's what I wanted to hear, because if you're telling me that a part-time guy got the job done, I have to ask the question, why do I need a full-time guy then? But if you tell me that we're going to add things, I need to know what those are to really justify adding another guy, and this guy's going to be more a management guy. So I'm not really seeing him jumping in a salt truck and insulting, right? I don't know, is he going to have a pickup truck with tools so he can go fix the handle when a certain person calls in the morning from the train station? Mr. Lang?
Right, and you hit the nail on the head there. Our, the main reason we want this to be a full-time position is largely because of those administrative tasks. There's a lot of areas where we could be more proactive and maybe, you know, put a little bit into systems up front to save ourselves for some larger replacement down the line. I mean, that's certainly something that would be the goal of this position.
Right. I mean, those are, I don't know about anybody else, but those are the things I need to hear because I don't see a return on this guy if you're telling me he's walking around looking at light bulbs and fixing handles, but then he's going to be managed, but maybe he could drive a plow truck. I mean, he's, there's got to be a specific description for what this guy does. And right now, based on the answers, it seems like it's all over the board. But in my head, I'm hearing you tell me that this guy's going to be more a management guy and have control over what needs to be done and fixed and make sure that he takes care of getting it done, not he's doing it. Is that a correct assumption?
Yeah, absolutely. That's definitely where we were trying to go with it, and that's maybe the wording that got kind of confused with Alderman Wesley, that while he will be handling those tasks also, a large part of his job is going to be the administrative side of things. And as we, like I said, get more facilities brought in, you know, proper planning, and I mean, you could look at some of the jobs we've had over the past few years with the police station, boiler systems, the roof over at Public Works. This is something where we could have saved ourselves probably a lot of trouble early on.
Alderman Jacob?
What, what do other, do other communities have a position like this?
Mr. Lang?
Yeah, absolutely. I could tell you that where I came from, they had a facility manager also, and I know a number of other communities have it as well.
Alderman Messina?
So is there, I know there's certain levels, right, when people get brought in? Is there, is this like, would this be a level one, two position?
Mr. Lang?
It's outside of the union contract, so we're not bound by those figures. It's out of the administrative budget, so it's.
Right, that's why I say this guy's more a management, middle-management guy.
Mayor, please?
Yeah, when I first saw this, I asked the manager, what's this guy going to do? I talked to the facilities manager where I work, those two guys. I go, explain to me your job, what you do, because the city's looking to get a facilities manager. He goes, well, what's he going to do? Is he just going to pick up the phone and call the plumber or the heating guy? Or is he going to do what I do? Check the generators, check the refrigeration. He just doesn't change light bulbs and things like that. He is, so, I go, so you're telling me, so if this guy's doing some of that work, I mean, he goes naturally, some of it's contracted, you got contracts, I'm sure, but some of it you need to handle yourself or you call somebody. So when you start calling that company out at $150 an hour, the guy should pay for himself. But that's not what I'm hearing here. I'm just, I'm just hearing, somebody's going to make a phone call. I could probably get somebody to make a phone call for about half the price.
Mr. Lang?
Yeah, and I think what we're trying to stress here is kind of a balance between the two administrative and operations-wise. I don't need to pay somebody 70 grand a year to call somebody to tell them that the exit light is burnt out. He can handle that as well as his other administrative responsibilities.
Mr. Messina?
See, I saw the parallels when I was reading through this as kind of like Nick Case's position, right? Nick can do what needs to be done, but if there's something like an ERP implementation, you don't need to bring in a partner, right? I think I agree with a lot of being set up here is we kind of, how do you bound this? Like, I'm not, I need a job description, I guess is the simplified way, right?
That's what I was saying.
Yeah, it's just kind of all over, it's kind of all over the place, like, well, this person will cover this, will do this, maybe they'll do this, but like, we may sit here next year unless one of us literally puts a reminder to say, get a full thread of what they have done. Like, to me, what is, what's our return on investment? I think you touched on that too. And I think you touched on that, right? There's a lot of good things that we could do to be proactive, which is great. We don't, we don't need another manager. We could hire Peter, he does it. We make, he calls, we call, we all call. I don't know if we need a person to have central. So I'm hoping there's a job description that better lays it out, I guess.
Mr. Alderman Jacob?
So I guess what I, I think of a facilities manager, and maybe I could help with the job description, I mean, I'm thinking of a person, I work in downtown, they have people that take care of our buildings, so that person actually knows how to fix heating and air conditioning situations, so he doesn't, you know, if there's something broken here or he, an air conditioner, he could look at it and possibly fix it. He may not have to call somebody. Is this person going to be able to do that, or is this person just going to call somebody? Or is this person going to be the type of person I'm thinking that is, will actually do some of that work?
Ideally, like I said, this individual would have a strong building maintenance background. They'd be able to handle a number of tasks like that. It would work, I mean, essentially presently, how it flows now is I, Director Cage or myself would send somebody out to look at it, and if it's something that they can handle, they handle it. If not, they have to call out a company to come fix it then. I mean, but we have public works employees, we don't have electricians, we don't have plumbers necessarily. This individual would have a strong background in building maintenance and be able to handle a lot of those everyday items and maybe save us some money on contractors that we're calling out, so.
Alderman Jacob?
So based on that, I mean, I do see a benefit to this. I mean, if it's, if it's a guy that actually fixed some things and he's really basically a maintenance guy that's taking care of the buildings, right now, if the police chief calls and says, hey, it's really hot in here, we have the AC set at 67, then it's 78 degrees in here, this guy might be able to fix that versus you coming over here or Ed going over there or anybody. I mean, you, I mean, you guys aren't equipped to fix that most likely, so you're going to have to call somebody. But if this guy has that background that he could do some of this work, I mean, I see the, you know, I see the good in having a person like this.
Mr. Lang?
Correct, and that's exactly the idea. And it's trying to avoid that duplication of duties between Director Cage and myself because now facility issues fall in kind of a gray area between our two departments. So we have to kind of coordinate it first to see who's going to handle it. And, you know, eventually, it's just an inefficient process and it's highly reactive. We're waiting until things fail where we could be more proactive and hopefully saving ourselves some money down the line.
Alderman Messina?
I just, just to wrap this up, I don't, I don't see it, I think it's a process issue at this point, not a, we need another head issue, in my opinion. I think that if you guys can go back and really come back to me at least with ROI and a job description, I could support it. If we don't give you the green light, obviously it's not going to be budgeted for, but is there a way for him, for them to come back later, Brad, in the year? Or would it have to be next fiscal year?
Mr. Murmice?
We're having some of the same discussions on this position, or at least at a staff level initially, on this position as we did initially with the special events marketing type position. And as we kind of vetted that out over the years, it kind of morphed into the council actually finally feeling comfortable in hiring that position. And I heard a lot of the same things about, well, what's this person going to do? Is he going to be able to do video? Is he going to be able to do website? Is he going to be able to do marketing, special events? Luckily, we were able to find a person that did all those. I see this very similar, so we can always come back and vet this out more if we're not comfortable tonight. But as I'm sure you could see, this is kind of why Director Wilson kind of alluded to, if we could have done a yellow sheet, this probably would have been our first yellow sheet. While we think there's a lot of good ideas in here, you know, there are a lot of pros and cons, and it kind of is still maybe unknown if we really do need this right now. But it, we certainly could find the work for this individual, but is it enough to, it's close.
To the mayor's point, just to wrap my point, to the mayor's point, if you come back and you have a candidate can do, can actually do the work, not just pick up the phone, then the funding makes sense. But somebody to pick up a phone, that number needs to be cut in half. I mean, I just, the amount, just the salary seems insane.
Right.
Until we figure out the role.
Well, let me jump in. So I really wasn't a fan to start with, but as we go through this and try to ferret out the information, right, that what we have on this paper really is, is not descriptive of what's really going to happen. So the way I'm envisioning this now, I'm assuming is this guy is more management than he is labor. One of the things I would see, this kind of goes back to the contract manager thing that we had years ago, that could be a piece of that, right, to keep control of that along with, periodically, there's things that may be checked and tested throughout the facilities that he would handle those, right? So there's, I think that that's the missing piece, is that we don't know enough about exactly what he's going to do and.
Or she.
And I'm, or she. And I'm willing to give Alan a chance to come back at the next meeting and put something together before we shoot it down completely, because I think there's some merit there. I just don't think everybody up here is comfortable with what we're getting for our money.
Mr. Lang?
I understand your concern, and as Director Wilson alluded to, I could have just come up here and just read that entire memo that listed out all what his responsibilities would be. I wanted to spare you from falling asleep on me here at the podium. But I think there's kind of maybe a gap in what expectations are. I mean, some people, from what I'm hearing, are expecting this individual to do the day-to-day task, and others are expecting to be more administrative. What I imagine is that kind of near 50-50 balance between handling, saving us some money on calling out contractors, as well as being more proactive in our approach to facility management.
And I, and I think, before I called Alderman Jacob, I think we understood the pieces of the management part, so we can all visualize what the labor slash maintenance part is. Fix the door handle, change the light bulb, right? Try to fix the vacuum switch in the police department, can't do it, call heating guy, right? But what are we getting on the management side? What, what does that look like? And again, going back to my original comment that now we have Patrick, and we thought Patrick could take care of some of the gray area, not to pick on Patrick because he's new. But we've never really sustained a full department to see how it works. And I know that there's a lot of things, we just, I think we all just want to be comfortable. Throwing a new person in there, but we haven't seen how our departments can run fully staffed to begin with, if that makes sense. And that was kind of a statement, you don't have to address it. Alderman Jacob?
Mr. Murmice had something for?
Mr. Murmice?
Yeah, sure. The good news is, we did, at the end of the day, not decide on doing a yellow sheet or a red sheet for that matter, but we did a green sheet. We did a green sheet because we do have the funding for this. So my recommendation, again, I would, I would echo back to the special events marketing position. We did a very similar thing where the council approved it, but we actually brought it back to a separate meeting with the job description and vetted it out with more details. I know Alderman Messina was really interested in.
I'm willing to let him go back.
The description, and we discussed that at a committee meeting, and at that point, it could have been yeah or no. So the budget as presented had it in there, but we wouldn't hire, we wouldn't do anything. We can make this a separate committee topic with the description and vet it out more, which is what we did for the special events marketing position.
Given that, I think I'd be comfortable moving forward, passing this in the budget if we get a second look at what that guy is and what that description is.
Or gal.
Or gal, that person.
That person.
Alderman Eugene Wesley, you had a question down there?
Yeah, I do. You know what? Reading this description, I just see a union grievance coming forward. If this guy starts repairing a light bulb that our public works guys could do, I just see the union grievance coming. So I agree with everyone else here, come back with it, refab it, whatever way you want, but that's, that's the only thing, so.
Mayor, please?
Jeff, I totally agree. When we started talking about special events marketing, but we really had no marketing. Our marketing was poor at best. We needed that position. We needed to move into the next century, and Grant has done an excellent job with that. Here, we still don't, Alderman Woods said it, we haven't had the full staff there in over a year. Can we just see what's happening with the full staff? And we can address this, I mean, at some other point.
That's what I say. Well, just before I call you, Mr. Murmice, would say I think, I think that that's a good idea to pass this and then come back and let Mr. Lang and Murmice and get together and Patrick and kind of define what that is looking, right? Because we do have a new facility we're trying to bring online. There's going to be some extra work that's required to do that. We never had that before. That's going to take either Director Lang's time or Assistant Director Patrick's time. And we haven't added that piece into, I'm just vetting it out now in my head as I think about it.
Right, I got to make.
Mayor, please?
If want to pass it and keep it in the budget for now.
We'll keep it in the budget until we get.
But before any position is put out there open for hire, that it comes to the council for a final decision. Because I don't think everybody's comfortable.
Right, that's, well, that's what we're saying.
Well, if we pass it and it's in the budget, the manager has every right to hire that position.
Right, and then they'd be looking for another position, anyway.
Mr. Murmice?
We, we all know that's not how I operate. And like I said, we would, we would follow the same playbook. We would bring it back, we would bring the description, vet it out, and to be honest, to be quite honest, we have a very busy spring with items on the docket for committee, so that will work perfectly to maybe wait until six months with the full team midway through the fiscal year, come back. By that time, we'll have more data on our current staff, and we can talk about it again. There's no harm in including it. I certainly 100% have no intention of filling it, and I didn't the last time, so it's kind of a no-brainer.
You've been around, we're used to it.
Alderman Jacob, one last question, and then we'll move on.
I had a couple of questions. Well, first of all, I'm going to make a motion to approve this.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Now your question?
Now, I kind of, I, I think I, I think the confusion is here is, I mean, we're, some of the people up here, I think, some of my colleagues here, think of this as a public works person. I mean, this is a building maintenance person. Again, working downtown, there's a building maintenance person that handles the building. They know about heating and air conditioning, they know about some of this stuff. So I'm not really sure why everyone's so confused on this. I mean, we constantly pay heating and air conditioning people to fix the police departments, heat and air conditioner. I mean, if we have a person here that knows how to fix some of that stuff, we're going to save money. So again, I, I think it, you know, this is a plus, and I think we should do this.
All right, we have a, we have a motion, we have a second. And that, and that, we're going to leave it in the budget, and before there's any hiring, the city staff's going to come back to us with it. Okay, so roll call?
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes. That passes. Mr. Wilson, would you like to move on?
I would love to, thank you. Sure, so, moving on to streets, they're high level, there is a not-recommended expanded level item that I'm gonna predict is might be the quickest expanded level of the night, but nothing really significant in here. Again, the capital outlay, again, those are the miscellaneous items, and this year, doesn't look like there's a whole lot up for replacement in the streets division. Unless there's any questions, high level?
Unless anybody has any desire to, nope, okay, there being none, we can...
Okay, thank you. So moving on to the expanded...
Hold on a second, hold on a second, I didn't see it, sorry.
So...
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I believe this was for a safety issue for bus stops, to clean up the bus stops and the way we plow our streets. So, my question to you, I don't know where these numbers came from, because that's pretty hard to believe. So, my question to you, so if our public works guys plow the sidewalks, I mean, plow the, the streets, and they block the sidewalk, and they drive by the sidewalk and say, hey, this is now a safety concern, why can't we do it on a case-to-case basis if the pile is so high and people cannot get to the bus stop? You can't tell me, I'm not saying clean every bus stop, I'm just talking about safety issues for the kids on the school, okay? So, I am low prob...
I'm waiting for him to finish.
Not approving this, but I would like to do it case-to-case basis if someone calls and says the kids are in the middle of the street, because they can't get to, maybe our public works guys go there, we're back, go and open up that one sidewalk. I, I'm just...
Mr. Murmas, would you like to take that question?
That is exactly our intent on what we're gonna do, and what we do do. That's why it's a red sheet, and we're gonna take it case by case.
Alderman Messina?
Rather than making it red, could you just look at outsourcing this, and we move on? Because to me, four hundred thousand, just, I, I can't even imagine how many calls out to a third party I could make to get those, those stops fixed. It's not an everyday problem.
I'll leave my present job for four hundred K. Buy a truck and rent a guy, and I'll drive the guy around.
Mr. Murmas?
The times this comes up is obviously when we get an extreme amount of snowfall. And even when we do get an extreme amount of snowfall, like Alderman Wesley said, it may not be on every bus stop or in every area. So when we get a call in about a certain area, no need to outsource, we can go over there and we can do it with our current equipment. The reason why this is so high is this was a proactive approach to do it every time mandatorily for every single corner, which would not be an efficient use of dollars or staff time, so...
So my ask is, how do you counter that, and why don't you find a third party that we can, so when you get the calls from one of us, or from a resident, you, you can, so you don't have to say no?
Mr. Murmas?
We actually had that same thought process for years back when we put in the budget to outsource the plowing of the metro lot. And that, the genesis of that was a one-off year that we had a ton of snow, and we got behind on the metro lot one time, and then the council wanted to put it in the budget that that can never happen again, and we need to have these dollars for the consultant. In reality, we never spent the dollars for the consultant because we were able to handle it ourselves. I feel as this is the same scenario.
This is kinda like all the other departments, we've never really been kicking on all eight corners. Mayor, you still have a question?
That's okay.
You're good?
We're good.
Mr. Wilson, I think we...
Thank you. On the vehicle maintenance, uh, nothing really remarkable in this one.
I know. Sorry, go ahead.
Okay. Moving on to central services. So contractual, again, is up, due largely to healthcare costs and IT software licenses related to the new ERP. And some of that is due to the overlap, is as we're shutting some things off, we're bringing some things online. And so we knew that that was gonna be, there's gonna be some overlap for a while in there, so that's not really that concerning. Decreasing commodities, related to some postage, and then building hall, city hall maintenance. And then decreasing interfund, again, I mentioned previously, we kinda restructured how the SURF was being funded. Specifically, the plow trucks coming onto the schedule over the next number of years, so we did tweak that a little bit. And again, the other, related to the contribution, the actuarial funding request for the police pension fund, which was calculated by the pension fund's actuary. And then the sales tax rebate, again, coming into play once forward space gets online and starts generating sales tax.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Is this where I talk about the police pension, or wait, with the...
Well, I don't know. Just wanna ask, and I'll see if it's the right place.
I just wanna know, with the state taking it over, how does that affect us? You know, I hear that we don't have control of it anymore, we, I hear we got control of it, I just don't know where...
I think that can be the, at the end, because that's a...
So just a real quick bookkeeping item, that was the last department in the general fund, so we're now through the general fund. Moving on into the, is everybody okay? Do you have some?
Well, yeah, we were doing the high over level until everybody asked a hundred and fifty questions. So, no, go ahead, whatever you wanna go to.
Well, I passed a lot of things, so you're gonna come back to that, but...
What I said is, we're going through, most of those will be answered, but go ahead, whatever...
Could I ask?
Yeah, no, you're, you're good.
So moving on to the road and bridge fund, kinda as the title indicates, a lot of this, these funds are used to maintain or whatnot, the roads and bridges. So, what we did was with the plow trucks coming into the SURF schedule over the next number of years, we did change a little bit of this and started funding some of those vehicles through the SURF fund out of the road and bridge fund, since those vehicles help maintain the roads and bridges via plowing, some of the other work with patching and whatnot throughout the year. So that would be an eligible expense, so we are, that's the inclusion of the interfund transfer to the SURF this year. Kinda offsetting that, we took some of the roadway maintenance, road striping, whatnot, and rolled that into the roads program in the CIP. So then that way, if we're doing a roads program, it would be all-encompassing, instead of having one part of it over in this fund, one part of it over in this fund, another part in another fund, we consolidated that into one central account for Mr. Lang and his team to kinda be a little bit easier for them to manage and streamline some of those processes and contracts. That's the thought behind that.
Oh, Mayor Police?
Brad, so, road and bridge, so, this money here, when we do Elizabeth Drive Bridge, and whatever else, pathway, whatever, we're gonna do, we're gonna use this money, correct, or, or are we gonna do it out of capital projects?
Mr. Wilson?
Sure, so right now, that was programmed in the capital projects fund, along with the SDP bridge money that H.R. Green is working on retaining, or I guess theoretically whoever wins the RFP to design the bridge would help us with that. But certainly, depending on how that funding goes and the cost for that project goes, money from this fund could be applicable to that project, or money from the MFT fund could be applicable to that project as well.
Which is coming up next, that was, can be my next question.
Correct, and then we do, so, I wanna jump ahead, but moving on, in the road and bridge fund, kinda the decision a number of years ago was to kind of build up that fund and then use it on a project at some point. So staff has identified potentially another project in the next probably one to three years that those funds could be used on.
Oh, hold on. We lost two Aldermen. We need four. I didn't see Sunny Lee.
We'll just pause for station identification.
Should we take a break?
Five-minute break, or?
Yeah, why don't, why don't we do that? We'll take a five-minute break.
All right, no, Sunny's bad.
We're gonna recess for five minutes, give them out a, since it's their first time out, I'm gonna give her a break.